Seeing as a quorum is present, we will open the meeting at 6:45 PM on May 16th. The first order of business is to elect a deputy moderator pro tem. At the advice of our moderator, we would like to suggest that we elect John Bruno. All those in favor?
Thank you, Susan, and welcome to the second night of the annual town meeting. I haven't done this in a couple of years, so if I make a couple of mistakes, I expect one of you folks will tell me. In any event, to start with, we have an announcement about the lakes. So we're going to make an announcement tonight that the Mont Ponsett Pond Aquatic Treatment, the initial treatment, will be conducted on Tuesday, May 17th. That's tomorrow. The ponds will be closed to all water uses, including boating, fishing, and swimming on the day of the treatment only. That's next Tuesday, or I'm sorry, tomorrow. Additionally, water from the ponds cannot be used for irrigation for a period of 90 days commencing on this day. Applicable water use restrictions will be posted with signs around the shoreline prior to application. So going on to the annual town meeting. So just to remind everyone, if you want to be heard, raise your hand and holler out, Mr. Moderator. If I forget your name, I apologize in advance, but we'll ask you to come up to the microphone, introduce yourself, who you are, so that we have it on our official record, and then we'll go about the business of whatever you want to talk about. When I understand that the last article that was pulled before the...
Mr. Moderator, can I please read the results of the annual election?
Yes, Mrs. Clerk.
At our annual election on May 14th, the following people were elected. For Board of Assessors, Robert Mullin. Board of Health, Candace Lee Green. Board of Library Trustees, Susan Hill and Erin Nagel. Board of Selectmen, one-year term, Jonathan H. Seelig. Board of Selectmen, three-year term, Alexander J. Mead. Constable, for three-year term, two positions, Thomas M. Hammond, Thomas F. Schindler. Halifax Elementary School, one-year term, Karen Beth Townsend. Halifax Elementary School, three-year term, Jessica Page. Park Commissioner, three-year term, Thomas F. Schindler. Planning Board, five-year term, Robert G. Gaynor II. Silver Lake School Committee, three-year term, Paula M. Hatch. Water Commissioners, for three-year term, Donald A. Bosworth. There was also a question on the ballot, and that question did pass with a yes vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The, as I said, the last article that was pulled but not addressed was Article 43. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry? Oh, I thought they did that, I'm sorry. I apologize. I forgot. I told you I'm a little rusty, okay? So thank you for helping me. If all of you would stand, and gentlemen, please remove your hats. Join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for reminding me. Article 43, do we have a motion?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Seelig?
First off, thank you for helping us out tonight. The motion I have is I move Article 43 as printed on page 39. This one is in your warrant. This is not in the handout. This is in your warrant, page 39.
Do we have a second?
I second.
So Article 43 has been printed as it is in the warrant. Also, on the handout, the handout that's in the hallway there that has all of the articles, it would be on page 16 for anyone who has that. Mr. Seelig, it's your article. Would you like to speak to it?
Sure. This article would limit the number of marijuana establishments in the town of Halifax to two.
Finance Committee's recommendation?
Finance Committee does not recommend.
Finance Committee does not recommend. You'll probably be asked why. Do you have an explanation?
Two reasons. First, it's a value capture in that it would basically create a duopoly in the town. Given the town's fiscal constraints, we believe it's revenue restrictive. And second, we believe that it creates a situation where we're moving the goalposts. We have set a set of bylaws on how marijuana establishments will be accepted into the town. It makes us, it damages our reputation as a place to do business if we're constantly changing those bylaws.
Okay, thank you. I skipped over the Planning Board's recommendation. Unless there is someone here from the Planning Board who wants to speak to this. Ms. Troop?
Hi, everybody. We had a vote on this bylaw that we limited to, and it wasn't as worthy, a vote of two to one.
Okay, so the Planning Board held a hearing and voted two to one to recommend. Is that right?
That's correct.
This being a zoning board, I mean, a zoning bylaw change that will require a two-thirds vote, is there any other debate that you wish to bring to the floor? Hearing no evidence of any debate, we'll now move to the question again. It'll have to have a two-thirds vote for this to pass. All those in favor, please raise your green cards. All right, all those opposed, raise the red. The motion does not reach two-thirds. The motion fails. The next article?
Article 18.
Article 18.
Mr. Moderator?
Just one second, please. Article 18 is on page seven of the handout for anyone who didn't bring a copy of their warrant in?
For Article 18, I'd like to move as printed in the handout.
As printed in the handout, okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second to approve Article 18 as printed in the handout. Again, that would be on page seven of your handout. Mr. Mead, it's your article. Would you like to speak to it?
I believe Matt Durkey is in the audience. I was wondering if he could give us a quick narrative on the article.
Finance Committee's recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommends. Is there any debate on Article 18? Okay. Just come on up and identify yourself, please, for us.
Hi, good evening. Matt Durkey, Director of Facilities for the Silver Lake Regional School District. This article is to raise funds to replace the current control system in the Halifax Elementary School elevator. It's an older system. We recently just replaced the controls on it, and it took a long time to find a replacement board for this current system. Multiple companies that we had spoken with highlighted the fact that this was the last board that they could find, control board, for this current system. So if this current system, the elevator, fails, we will not have a control board to replace it, which will then require an emergency service, and the cost could be well over the amount that we are asking to be appropriated for it.
Okay, thank you. Any other debate on Article 18? Folks, just to remind you, if you want to get my attention, please yell loud and raise your hands so that I can see you and call on you. I'm not trying to ignore anybody, but I need to, I need to see that. All right, no? Yes, sir, right there.
Frank Johnston, Elm Street, Halifax. If we're putting a new board in there, how old is the board that's being replaced? And how long do you anticipate this current board to work for $66,000?
Okay.
And the price of the board that we just put in, what was the cost of that?
So I'll see if I can get an answer for you. Do you have an answer for the question?
Matt Durkey, Director of Facilities for Silver Lake Regional School District. The board was replaced two falls ago. I don't have the exact figure on that replacement. I believe it was in the $20,000 range, and at that time, they told us that this was the last board available. So again, if this system fails, we can't for certainty tell you when or if it will fail. There is a possibility that this board can last in the current system for another 10 years. But if that board fails, there will be no other board to replace it, and the overall cost of the project will far exceed the current amount that we're asking for.
Any further questions? Any further debate? I think it's behind you, two, yeah, yes, ma'am. Come up to the microphone, please.
Mark Smith at Twin Lakes Drive. I was just curious, what is the warranty on the new board? Do we have information on that? Thank you.
I'll see if I can find out. Do we have any answer to that on the warranty?
Matt Durkey, Director of Facilities for Silver Lake. The current warranty on the board, I don't have that specific information, but any type of initial install would be covered under the first year of this company for parts in replacement. After that, the system, I believe, would be five years for parts, not including labor.
All right, any further debate? Yes, sir.
Just to follow up to the question I had asked earlier, how long was the other board in there before it was replaced? Was it in there 10 years, 20 years? Was it the original board?
Okay, we'll try and find out. Do we have an answer for that question?
The prior board that was in there was there, to my knowledge, since when I was working at this building for a minimum of seven years. Prior to that, we don't know, or I don't know and have that information in front of me, how long that current, that board specific was in that elevator system. But it's something that we could come back and revisit.
All right, I thought I saw a hand in the back. Yes, sir, come on up front.
The answer to the previous speaker's question, Gordon C. Andrews, 244 Elm Street. The original board was 1993.
All right, thank you. Any further debate on Article 18? Yes, sir.
Jim Keegan, 338 Elm Street. The Director of Facilities said that this is the last board. So whether it lasts a year or 10 years, it seems to me this is a no-brainer. It's going to save the town money. $66,000 is going to be well, the cost will be a lot more than that for, to replace the whole system. That elevator is needed not only for handicapped but children who have injuries, so it seems like a no-brainer to me.
Okay, thank you. Any further debate on Article 18? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 18, please raise your green cards. Thank you. Those opposed, raise the red. The article passes. The next article is?
Article 39.
Article 39, which is on page 15 of your handout?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Seelig?
I move to move this motion as written in the warrant, Article 39, and I apologize, I don't have that page again. Did you announce the page on that one? The page it's on for people to find.
I don't know what page it's on in the Finance Committee?
15? Okay. Yeah. Okay. And I was just told this one is in the handout, right?
So this article's being moved, I understand, as it is printed in the town meeting warrant? Our warrant is reproduced in the Finance Committee handbook at Article 39, right?
Correct.
Okay, and that's what we're trying to move. So we don't want to read all five pages of it.
Yeah, it's pretty lengthy, so we'll move it as written.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move Article 39 as it is printed in our warrant. Mr. Seelig, it's your article?
Yeah, I would like to defer to the interim Town Administrator to speak to this article.
Mr. Thorne?
Mr. Moderator, the language that's in that handout is done by the consultant that worked with the Board of Health. The Board of Health has already adopted these regulations, and this just codifies the stormwater regulations to meet the state code.
Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 39?
Finance Committee did not make a recommendation. There's no discernible financial impact. There's no discernible financial impact that we could see.
All right, Finance Committee does not recommend. Do we have any discussion on Article 39?
Oh, sorry, Mr. Moderator. We did not, we did not make a recommendation.
Oh, you did not make a recommendation?
Correct.
I'm sorry. Just keep your voice up a little bit for me. Thank you. Finance Committee's not making a recommendation, so they're not approving it or otherwise. All that being said, any debate on Article 39? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 39 as printed in the warrant, raise the green papers. Thank you. Opposed, please raise the red papers. So the article passes. The next article?
Article 10.
Article 10. Article 10 is on page five of your handout?
Ms. Moderator? I move Article 10 as printed in the handout.
As printed in the handout, okay. So Article 10 has been moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Article 10 has been moved and second as printed in the handout, which basically tells you where the money is coming from. Yes, ma'am, it's your article?
This article funds a 1% wage increase for the police patrolmen who are in the Union.
All right, Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 10?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any debate on Article 10? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 10, raise the green flags. Thank you. All those opposed, raise the red. The motion passes. Next article?
Article 27.
Article 27. Article 27 is on page 10 of your handout?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 27 as written on the handout.
As printed in the handout. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move Article 27 as printed in the handout, which again is on page 10. And again, this tells us where the money is coming from. It's your article. Would you like to speak to it?
I would actually ask the fire chief to speak to it, please.
Fire Chief, being a town department head, has the right to speak to the article. Thank you, Chief.
Jason Viveros, Fire Chief. This article is to replace our 2017 ambulance. The reason it's appearing, it's up this year, is because the vehicle manufacturers have advised us that the wait time on an ambulance now is two years because of their inability to obtain chassis. So that's why it's coming up this year instead of next year.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 27?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommends. Is there any debate on Article 27? See? Yes, sir, come on up front.
Bob McCarthy, 610 Mont Ponsett Street. I realize this is saying $100,000, so you're saying you need a replacement, but when you got the last one, you said you were six years old before getting the next ambulance, right?
Mr. Moderator?
And I'm supposed to be to you, I know.
Up to the Moderator.
And I understand our new mechanic is doing great with the PMs and all our vehicles, so they're going to last longer. I don't see why we can't put this out another year or two to see what revenues we get in from the pot shops.
Any further discussion on Article 27? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, please say aye or raise the green flags. Thank you. Opposed, raise the red flags. The article passes.
Article 40.
Article 40. Article 40 is on page 15 of your town meeting handout?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move Article 40 as written in the town handout.
I'm sorry, you move them as printed in the handout?
As printed in the handout.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article 40 as printed in the handout. It's your article? Want the fire chief to go?
Yeah, the fire, do you want to speak on it?
Chief Viveros?
This article eliminates the fire chief as a mandatory member of the Holidays in Halifax Committee. I believe it was placed in the bylaw years ago, especially when we had fireworks, but as that's no longer the case, my feeling is it's best to leave that to a committee of residents. And the fire chief and police chief, we still act as advisors to those committees, both Holidays in Halifax and the fireworks committee, and any other committee we're asked to by the board. But this would open it up to three residents, eliminate the fire chief's responsibilities of actually planning the event, but would still obviously be involved with the public safety end of it.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 40?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends, Article 40. Is there any debate on Article 40? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, raise the green flags. All right, thank you. Opposed, raise the red flags. The article passes. The next article?
Article 15.
Article 13?
15.
Article 15 is on page six of your town meeting handout.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move Article 15 as printed in the town handout.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article 15 as printed in your town meeting handout, which again is at page six. It's your article?
I would ask for our police chief to speak, please.
Okay, the police chief, being a department head, has the right to address the town meeting. Chief?
John Shouse, Police Chief. Several years ago, the town adopted a policy to replace two police vehicles a year to keep down the cruiser maintenance budget as part of, and repair costs have skyrocketed. And to be sure that our police vehicles are in good working order, the vehicles will be replacing other town department vehicles and will not be adding any additional vehicles to our fleet. This article is in keeping with the town policy, and I believe we've been doing this to cruisers since 2010.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Finance Committee's recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any debate on Article 15? Yes, sir, Mr. McCarthy?
Bob McCarthy, 610 Mont Ponsett Street. I remember when this went in as the two a year, but last year, because of COVID, the police department got a pickup truck. So we actually got three vehicles last year. So I don't see why we're still asking for two. I mean, we can go down to one, sounds like a better idea to me. I, like I said, three last year when it's normally two a year, so to me, it seems like a waste of money to be getting two.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, Mr. Chief, you want to respond to that?
Yes, so Ms. McCarthy was correct. We did get the pickup truck as part of the COVID CARES Act. The vehicle's not set up for frontline duty. It's basically a specialty vehicle that towed our trailer that we used in response to COVID to do meal deliveries, community outreach stuff. So again, the cruisers are going to be handed down, so we're actually going to be replacing a 2015 Explorer with 110,000 miles, and a 2012 Chevy Tahoe with 134,000 miles from the building department and our animal control officer. So it's actually going to be, in the long run, better for the town because we'll have vehicles that are actually be able to run and, you know, do service calls and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Yes, sir, Mr. Keegan?
I'd like to just echo what our chief said. That pickup truck is not used for patrol. Those were for funds, COVID funds, so there's a specific, specific requirements where that truck can be used. This, again, I know I used this term before, it should be a no-brainer. Two cruisers, these are the cars that are on the road 24 hours a day, and they're answering the calls for 911. This should be automatic, that the chief, this passes for the town.
Okay, thank you. Any further debate on Article 15? Seeing, oh, yeah, holler out Mr. Moderator for me so I can get visual and hearing.
Frank Johnston, Elm Street. Two questions. The two units that are being replaced, are they getting traded in or are they going to different departments within the town, or are they going to be used within the police department?
Are they getting traded in or are they getting used in the town? That's the question. Chief?
Are you talking, are you talking about the cruisers that we are?
I think he's asking you about this article, Chief.
So the, they're both going to be used as police vehicles, but then the vehicles that they'll be replacing are going to be handed down to the two other departments. So the plan is to put them up for auction or trade them in, that's town's meeting prerogative on what they want to do. I believe it's probably be more beneficial if we put them up for auction. I know recently, we had a vehicle that was traded in to one of the dealers, and then, while doing some research, that vehicle came up and was sold by an auction company for a lot more than we had, they gave the town when we traded it in. So I think it's beneficial, more financially prudent, to, you know, to put them up for auction than trading them in. Because for trading in, we've been getting like $5,500 for the cruisers that we've been trading in, and that price has been going down for the last few years.
Any further debate on Article 15? Seeing no evidence of any further debate, all those in favor, the green cards, please. Thank you. Opposed, the red cards. The motion passes. The next article?
Article 19.
Article 19. Article 19 is found on page eight of your handout?
Ms. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Mead?
I move for Article 19, that $200,000 be transferred from undesigned fund balance of free cash in the treasury of the town, and $20,000 be raised and appropriated from the 2023 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the Board of Selectmen with the approval of the Highway Surveyor to purchase a medium-duty dump truck with plow and sander for the Highway Department.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Mead, the difference is what between what's printed in the handout and what you just moved?
The difference that's what's printed in the handout and what I just moved is I understand there was a $20,000 cost increase on the truck. I'd like to ask the department head to come forward.
All right, would you like to speak any further to the article?
Thank you.
It's up to you if you want to. You don't have to. Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 19?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. So you'll note that there is a $20,000 increase, and what the Board of Selectmen did is just designate where that $20,000 is coming from in their amended motion. Any debate on Article 19?
Mr. Moderator? We would like to have the department heads just to speak to it for the narrative. So if Steve would come up from Highway, please.
Thank you. Mr. Hayward knows how to get my attention.
Right here.
There you go.
Steve Hayward, Highway Surveyor. This truck is going to be replaced in a 1995 Ford 800. The truck, we don't have a dump body on it, we've got the sander permanently mounted to it, so we don't even have a dump body. mounted to it, so we don't even have a dump body for that truck. Uh, we'll be buying a, a, uh, medium-duty truck, which the town does not have yet. We've never had a medium-duty, we've always had the small or the large trucks. And we've never had a medium-duty truck, we've always had the small one tons or the large trucks. This truck will be able to use in other areas of town that the big trucks are having a hard time getting into, so that's why I went with the medium-duty, also because, also because the, uh...
There you go. Thank you.
Also because the, um, now I lost where I was. No, the, uh...
You were describing why you wanted this truck.
Yeah, the, the whole reason for going with the medium-duty is to get in the areas where we can't go with the big truck, and we'll have a dump body again. We might not be getting the sander because the prices have gone up so high that we're gonna try to get the, the one that's on the truck now and make it a slide-in for the new truck.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or debate on Article nineteen? Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Seelak had said that it's coming from free money, is that correct? Cause it doesn't state that in the, um, article.
Always address the moderator and I'll, I'll ask you, I'll get your answers. So you wanna know where it's coming from?
Yes, Mr. Seelak said it was coming from free money.
No, it's not free money, but, uh, I think Mrs. Nolan might be, our town accountant might be able to explain that for us.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, I, as far as I know, there's nothing free.
So there's 200,000 coming from undesignated fund balance. That figure is referred to as free cash in the town's treasury. Every year, we get certified at the end of the fiscal year on the amount of money, um, which they term as free cash, which they tell you as an accountant is not free and is not cash. But it is the money that is left in the treasury that is in excess of the revenues we estimated, and, and it's the money that has been unspent in the general fund budget. So 200,000, $200,000 of this article is coming from the undesignated fund balance, and the 20,000 will be from raised and appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Yes, uh, Mr. Hayward?
I al- I also wanted to say that, uh, I've looked at other trucks that are on the, the contract from the state bid, and one is like 115, one's 125, and then the higher one was 132. So there's a different range for the trucks, different companies, but I'll be going with the one that I can get the cheapest at this point, because the prices, I mean, it could change by the time we get to buy the truck in a month and a half. So when I started looking at this truck, it was, uh, 86,000, it's up to 132 right now. So that's within two months, three months.
Okay, thank you. Any further debate or discussion on Article nineteen? Uh, seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, raise the green cards. Thank you. Opposed, the red cards? Uh, the motion passes. Next article?
Article sixteen.
Article sixteen. Article sixteen is found on page seven of your, uh, town meeting, um, handout.
We'll try that again, sorry. Mr. Moderator, I move that Article sixteen, uh, be moved as printed in the handout.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second on Article sixteen to move as printed in your handout, and again, Article sixteen, you will find on page seven. Mr. Seely?
Correct. Uh, I'd like to defer to the chief, uh, to speak to this article, please.
Thank you. Chief?
We need money for new bulletproof vests. This article is placed on the warrant as the officers' bulletproof vests are replaced on a rotating basis. The vests of a manufacturer's recommended lifespan of five years. Halifax is a mandatory wear department, so we get to supply the officers with vests every five years. We get partial reimbursement from the state and the federal government, and those funds are put back into the article for the purchase of more vests. This year, we're looking at purchasing six vests. The cost of vests are about $900.
Thank you, Chief. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article sixteen?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article sixteen? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article sixteen? Thank you, the green cards? Thank you, the opposed? Article sixteen passes unanimously.
Article twenty-five.
Article twenty-five. Article twenty-five you'll find on page ten of your, uh, town meeting handout, and...
Mr. Moderator?
I think we have Ms. Galant, do you wanna move this?
Um, yeah, how do I, what do I say?
We'll, we'll move it.
Oh, okay, they're gonna, they're gonna move it and let you speak to it, so, but just sit down for a second. Thank you. You can sit right there on the side. All right, yes, sir, Mr. Mead.
Uh, I motion that Article twenty-five be moved as printed in the handout.
I second.
We have a motion and a second that Article twenty-five be, um, uh, voted on as printed in the, uh, town meeting handout. Uh, Mr. Mead, you wanna defer to Mrs. Galant?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Mrs. Galant?
Hi, Jean Galant, um, Cranberry Drive, and I'm also the, um, library director. So a number of years ago, six years ago, the lib-, um, town meeting voted to put the library computers, at that time, we had 21 of them, on a rotating, um, on a rotating basis, and actually, this is the last one. Um, it's a staff computer, and the, after this, we will have all Windows 10 computers.
All right. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article twenty-five.
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article twenty-five? All those in favor, the green cards? Okay, thank you. Opposed? It, uh, the Article twenty-five, excuse me, Article twenty-five passes. Next article?
Article thirty-seven.
Article thirty-seven. Article thirty-seven is at, uh, page fourteen of your handout.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move Article thirty-seven as printed in the town handout.
I'm gonna have to say that a little bit more, what, you move to pass over?
Oh, my pass. I move to take no action and pass over Article thirty-seven.
So you move it to pass over Article thirty-seven, right? Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? Okay. This is, uh, an article that was proposed by the Finance Committee, so we'll ask your recommendation and also whether you want to pass it over.
We agree to pass it over, we do not recommend.
Okay, do you have an explanation as to why it should be passed over?
Uh, the Finance Committee was not comfortable that the, uh, the bidding process was sufficient, and so we were, we were just concerned that we were getting the right price and the right, the right value for money.
All right, thank you. Moving, uh, motion to pass over an article means we'll take no action on it. Uh, is there any, uh, discussion about passing over Article thirty-seven? Wait a minute, you're voting ahead of time. All those in favor of passing over Article thirty-seven? Uh, just the green ones, all right. The red ones, anybody opposed, the red ones? All right, the article passes. Next article? I'm, I'm sorry, Article thirty-seven is passed over.
Article thirty-six.
Article thirty-six. Article thirty-six is on page fourteen of your, uh, town meeting, town meeting handout.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move, uh, that the Article thirty-six, uh, be pa- uh, sorry.
As printed in?
As printed, I know, I'll get it right eventually.
I'll help you out, don't worry.
Appreciate it. As printed in the handout.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article thirty-six as printed in your handout, which again is page fourteen of the handout. Uh, Mr. Seely, it's your article?
Sure. Uh, this article is to expand our efforts towards centralizing townwide IT and communication services to include the library and to extend network accessibility and relative, reliability to the town's water treatment facilities.
All right, uh, Finance Committee's recommendation, Article thirty-six?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Uh, any, uh, discussion on Article thirty-six? Is that a discussion, or are you ready to vote? Okay. Um, seeing no evidence of any discussion, all those in favor, Article thirty-six, green cards, thank you. Opposed, red cards? Motion passes.
Article thirty.
Article thirty. Article thirty is on page eleven of your, uh, town meeting handout.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Seely?
I move that Article thirty, uh, be moved as printed in the, uh, handout.
As in the handout, thank you.
I second.
Do we have a second? It's your article, Mr. Seely, do you wanna speak to it?
Uh, I would like to defer to the Water Superintendent if that is okay.
Yes, sir.
Bill Lindsay, Water Superintendent.
You might, might wanna, might wanna come up closer to that, cause it, so they can hear you. There you go.
This is for the upgrades to the Richmond Park Treatment Center and...
Don't be afraid of me.
It's for the Phase Two, for the upgrades of the lights, the generator, uh, some instrumentation, some, uh, chemical feed stuff and, and piping, cause all our stuff is, I think it's, uh, actually the equipment from when it was put in, so it's all almost 40 years old.
Okay, so it's replacement of...
Yes, it's just gonna, a lot of it's just gonna be replaced, yep.
Good, thank you. Uh, Finance Committee's recommendation, Article thirty.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article thirty? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, the green cards, please? Opposed, the red cards? Uh, Article thirty passes.
Article twenty-four.
Article twenty-four. Article twenty-four you will find at page nine of your handout.
Mr. Moderator, I move to, uh, motion Article twenty-four as printed in the handout.
Thank you, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article twenty-four. It's your article?
Uh, I would like to defer to the town clerk. Mr. Moderator, the date and the timestamp in the town clerk's office is very old and has been breaking down. Uh, we are no longer able to get replacement parts. The town clerk's office is required by law to date and timestamp many of the submissions that come into that office.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article twenty-four.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article twenty-four? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article twenty-four, the green, thank you. Opposed, to the red? Article twenty-four passes. Next article?
Article twenty-three.
Article twenty-three. Article twenty-three would be found at page nine of your handout.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Seely?
I move that we, uh, move this article as printed, uh, in the handout, Article twenty-three.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article twenty-three as printed in the handout. Again, that's on page nine. Uh, do you wanna speak to the article?
Sure, this has been a longstanding article, uh, something we've done for a long time. The, the Social Resource and Advocacy Center provides residents with services dealing with domestic violence intervention and prevention, so, there you go.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article twenty-three.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article twenty-three? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, the green cards, please? Thank you. All those opposed, the red cards? Article twenty-three passes unanimously.
Article nine.
Article nine. Article nine is on page four of your, um, town meeting handout. The Board of Selectmen?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Seely?
Uh, I move Article nine as printed in the handout.
Okay?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Article nine as written in the town meeting handout, which again is at page four of your handout. Um, do you wanna speak to your article?
Sure. So this article funds a 1% wage increase for the police sergeants, uh, who are in the union.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article nine?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on, uh, Article nine? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, the green cards, please? Thank you. Opposed, the red cards? Article thirty-nine passes unanimously.
Article thirty-four.
Article thirty-four. Article thirty-four is on pa- page thirteen of your, um, of your handout.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, ma'am.
I move Article thirty-four as printed in the town handout.
All right, uh, and we have a second?
Second.
Okay, do we have, uh, explanation?
I'm just wondering if anybody from the elementary school is here to speak on it? Miss, yeah.
I'm sorry, yep. School committee? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, uh, Matt Durkey, Director of Facilities. Um, the Halifax Elementary School is asking to appropriate these funds for the replacement of the intercom system in this school. Um, to my knowledge, it is, uh, the same system that has been since the, uh, 1993 remodel. Um, the current system is a proprietary and base system, which, um, only allows us to use one specified vendor to service this intercom system. So, uh, any, any repair calls, any adjustments to, uh, bell schedule needs to call out this, um, one specific contractor. This new system will, um, will have a non-proprietary and base system. There are several, uh, contractors in the Northeast that can, that can service this system. It'll work to, uh, fix some of the, um, uh, some of the current issues in the intercom system in this building. Uh, some areas have inconsistent, uh, transmission from the main office to the area. This can, uh, cause a safety concern if there is, um, an emergency in the school where all, uh, spaces in the building need to be alerted and, uh, given directions. So this will, uh, th- this will, um, in- improve dramatically the exchange of information within the building. This also, uh, this project will also entail replacement of all the clocks in the building. So, uh, with a power outage, um, uh, daylight savings, these, these clocks will, um, auto-adjust. The system also comes with a user-friendly platform where the main office can, from their desktop, uh, make simple adjustments in the bell schedule if there's, uh, uh, snow delay, half-day. Uh, this, we would no longer need to call in the proprietary and base contractor to make those adjustments for us. Um, the main office staff will be able to, uh, a very simple click-and-drag approach to change the bell system. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, excuse me, Finance Committee's recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends, it does not recommend, yes, thank you. All right, Finance Committee recommends Article thirty-four. Any discussion on Article thirty-four? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article thirty-four, please raise a green card, thank you. Opposed, the red card? Article thirty-four passes?
Article twelve.
Article twelve.
Mr. Moderator?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mead, yes?
I move that Article twelve, uh, we, I move it as printed in the handout.
Okay, Article twelve is on page five of the, uh, handout. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, uh, to approve Article twelve. Do you want to, uh, speak to the article?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator. This article allows the town to be a member of the Plymouth County Co-op Extension Service, which has many programs that benefit the town, including the For Each program.
Thank you, sorry. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article twelve?
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Um, any discussion on Article twelve? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article twelve as printed in the handout, please, uh, thank you, raise a green card. Opposed, raise the red card? Article twelve passes unanimously. Uh, Moderator needs one minute to talk to the town clerk. I'll give you one second. Thank you. The next article will be?
Article thirty-one.
Article 31. Article 31 can be found at page 12 of your handout. Yes, sir, Mr.?
Mr. Moderator, I would like to move Article 31 as printed in the handout.
Thank you.
I second.
Do we have a second? Thank you. It's your article, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I'd like to defer to a member of the committee.
Okay, come on up, please identify yourself.
Gordon Laws, Gordon Laws, 33 Highland Circle, and a member of the Silver Lake Regional School District School Committee. For a number of years, and this is a continuation of, of what we have done for a number of years, we contribute a portion of money for a part-time school resource officer to be on-site at the middle school. We pay a portion of that directly to the Kingston Police Department. Plimpton pays a portion of that to the Kingston Police Department. And then Kingston funds a school resource officer also for the high school individually.
All right, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 31?
Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. Finance Committee recommends Article 31. Is there any discussion on Article 31? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, the green cards, please? Thank you. Opposed? Article 31 passes. The next article?
Article 42.
Article 42?
Mr. Moderator?
Okay, is that page 16? Yes, Mr. Sayah?
I move to pass over and take no action on Article 42.
Okay, do we have a second to pass over?
Second.
All right, do you want to speak to the reason for a pass over?
The current board decided to take no action to allow the board to do some more research on this.
Finance Committee's recommendation on passing over Article 42?
We didn't take a position either way, so yes, we concur.
Finance Committee hasn't had a chance to vote on it, they take no position. Any discussion on Article 42? To pass over means we take no action, it's not approved, it's not denied. All those in favor of passing over, the green cards, please? All right, red cards for anyone? Okay, so the motion to pass over passes. This article is passed over. I believe that's the last one. Mr. Sayah, we need a motion to dissolve this town meeting.
I move to dissolve the town meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, this is not debatable. All those in favor of dissolving the annual town meeting, say aye? Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno, for helping us out. Thank you.